Ladies and gentlemen.
So, good morning, everybody, and we welcome you to the August 1st, 2023 meeting of the Calver County Board of Commissioners. At this time, I'd like to ask Reverend Kukuzo if he would come forward and give us an invocation.
Good morning.
Morning.
I go back a little ways. Pete Grover and Gott and Linda Kelly. And I was the guy that cut the trees at St. Leonard that they were worried about. But it's good to be here with you.
Thank you.
Once in a while they'll pull me out. As a pastor, as you will find out if you don't already know, you don't retire from who you are. And I honor you today. You got a lot heavier burden than Pete had. A lot of people down here. As a great president said one time, if we lose the freedom in this country, there isn't another one left. So it is a little serious when we pray that we're in a little trouble here in this country. Some of us remember when it was a little better off. And so we take it serious when we pray. There are people at the church that pray for you every week. Quite a few people. So we want you to go home with that in your bag. We're really caring about how this county is taken care of. It was easy to find a prayer for this morning. It's one that we have prayed many times. If my people will humble themselves and pray, seek your face, turn just a little bit from their wicked ways, he will hear from heaven and he will heal our land. I can't think of much better than that. And I think we are causing enough trouble that we'll have the desperation to turn from him when it's time. I believe it, it's time that we turn from him. Shall we all turn to him a little bit this morning? Amen. Just in case he's looking on us. Father, we come before you. You are a father. And Lord, you're God, and no matter who argues about it, you still were. You were here before us. And Lord, we turn to you with a humbleness. And we pray to you, and we ask you to heal everything in our land, and most of all, to give us the wisdom in this place. Because the power starts here at the county and these levels. So today, we ask you to bless the commissioners, give them wisdom, knowledge, and understanding to make the choices necessary as they listen this morning. Lord, we ask you to bless their families, their friends, their homes, and their lands. We do ask to bless them, no matter what political affiliation we might be. You're God over both parties, or three parties, four or five. We acknowledge that this morning, and we truly turn to you and ask you, in our hurriedness and busyness, that you would watch us and guide us, guard us, and keep our families safe. Keep America safe this morning, starting here this morning. Let the decisions that are made bless all of the people in this room. Give us peace, oh Lord, in this country. And Lord, guide us personally. In Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
God bless y'all. God bless everybody in the room. May you have a good time. I'm going back to hiding. God bless you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
(Inaudible) United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So Reverend Kukuzo comes to us this morning from Crossroads Church at St. Leonard's. It's the big church that sits there in the corner.
Somebody in the hospital.
Ah, go take care of them. And they still do a live nativity scene every year during Christmas.
Wonderful.
We appreciate that.
That's been a few years.
Yeah, yeah.
Like thirty days?
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And he mentioned they pray for us every Sunday. I attend St. John Vianney Church here in Prince Edward Gorge on Sundays, and they pray for us too. And we need all the prayers we can get. We greatly appreciate those. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. Move to approve.
A motion, the second that we approve the agenda as presented. Is there any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So I have a couple of public service announcements this morning. First of all, I want to announce that the Prince Edward Volunteer Fireman's Carnival starts tonight. And this year, they have changed locations. They are down at the Calver County Fairgrounds on 231. So I just want to make sure we get the word out to support the carnival. And it'll be from tonight until Saturday night at the fairgrounds on 231. Also, tonight is National Night Out. There are, I believe, thirteen communities around the county celebrating National Night Out. There's a list on the website. They're great events. They've been doing those for a very long time. There will, Public Safety, the Sheriff's Office, there'll be Health Department, there'll be lots of community organizations out tonight. So if you have one in your neighborhood, in a neighborhood near you, you should come out and support those. And also today, in a few moments, we're going to have a proclamation for National Black Business Month. And we greatly appreciate all of our businesses in Calver County. And this month, we want to celebrate those that are black-owned. And lastly, on my list, we are still celebrating National Farmers Market Week. I think that we celebrated local, by-local week, week before last. And this week is August 6th through the 12th. Actually, next week is National Farmers Market Week. If you go to our county website, you can find all the farmers markets and their hours of operation in Calver County. We ask that you come out and support all of those businesses that are at those farmers markets and support our local farmers. And watermen, and who else? I'm missing. Wineries, beer brewers. I don't want to miss anybody, or I'll get an email. So we do ask that you support the farmers markets all year long, not just during next week. And that concludes all my public service announcements for today. And that will bring us to a recognition. Director Cook?
Good morning, Commissioners. Mary Beth Cook, Director of Planning and Zoning. But I'm here today as a member of the Leadership Council from Leadership Southern Maryland. I'd like to invite up the Executive Director, Dr. Sybil Anderson, and also a member of the Board of Directors, Chris Breedlove. So we're here today to recognize the 2023 graduates of the Executive Program for Leadership Southern Maryland. Leadership Southern Maryland's Executive Program connects, educates, and inspires a diverse group of leaders, fostering collaborative, collaboration that addresses the community needs of Calvert, Charles, and St. Mary's Counties. Through a thought-provoking nine-month education program, the class participates in in-depth conversations, speaker presentations, and site visits covering a wide range of topics including education, public safety, defense and industry, healthcare, human and housing services, energy and environment, economic development, and workforce development, and multiculturalism and diversity. So I'm a huge supporter of this, having been through the class and a graduate of 2017. I give them my time and my talents. For six years, I was on the board. And I'd like to thank you sincerely for the support that you give to Leadership Southern Maryland in allowing county employees to participate in the program. And that's who we're here to recognize today. Did you all want to say anything before I introduce the graduates?
Come on, you just took a leadership class. I didn't mean you're supposed to step up and speak.
So, this year's graduates are from the Calver County Sheriff's Office, Nick D. Felice; from Communications and Media Relations, Sarah Eamon; from Economic Development, Julie Oberg; from Technology Services, Stephen Paera; and Kevin Schmidt from Communications and Media and Relations. So please join us up front for a picture.
Yes, please.
And I think they deserve a round of applause.
Y'all want to come up and join the picture?
Yes, come on up front.
We'll get through with Justin first.
Yeah.
Okay.
I've been told the word is scooch.
Three, two, one. Thank you much. Congratulations, guys.
Congratulations.
Come on, we're taking a lot of pictures. Congratulations.
Good job.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Kevin.
Kevin, good job. Thank you. Next item on the agenda are proclamations. The first one is for National Black Business Month. Commissioner Rasa? Oh, I'm sorry. You switched up on me. Commissioner Hart?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. Good morning. Julie, you want to get us rolling?
That would be fantastic. Thank you so much. So August is National Black Business Month. It's time to recognize and support our black-owned businesses and entrepreneurs across the county. And black-owned businesses account for approximately 2 million companies or 10% of the US companies. Our Calvert community thrives on these businesses. And to honor them, Economic Development will be spotlighting black-owned businesses throughout the month. We'll be sharing these features on Facebook, LinkedIn, and our website, choosecalvert.com. And I would personally like to extend our appreciation to all of the black-owned businesses here in the county who are here with us today and who have chosen Calvert County to be home for their business. We, today, we've got quite a few people here with us today. So I'd like to, again, thank you all for choosing Calvert for your home, for your business. And come on up and introduce yourselves and be part of the picture. Okay?
My name is Yomi Badmos-Mumoni. I own Kids Campus Early Learning Center in Dunkirk, Maryland.
Good morning. My name is Dietris Pickrel-Harad, and I own DLP Consulting Solutions in Port Republic, Maryland.
Good morning. I'm Rose Anna Vogt, founder of the Circle of Angels Initiative, Vice President of the Calvert County Minority Business Alliance.
So Keith and Kathleen Gross, Dylan's Power Washington Seal Coating, right-hand, Prince Frederick.
Hi, I'm Cynthia Thorne Carter. I'm the President of Smart Ride Transportation in Prince Frederick.
Hi, good morning. I'm Randy Parker Niles, and I'm the owner of E. Maddie Swag Salon in Prophetic Maryland. And I'm also a Realtor at Exahere Realty.
Etzel Brown, Etzel M. Brown Jr. Group, and Chair of the Southern Maryland Minority Chamber of Commerce.
Good morning. I'm Leona Charles. I am the Calvert Consultant for the Small Business Development Center where we work to support all of these businesses, as well as the other businesses in Calver County.
Okay. Well, thank you for coming in. And, you know, being in business is not easy. As we all know, you know, everybody goes, oh, you own your own business. You go home when you want. You know, you take off when you want. Right. Yeah. Nothing never breaks. Nobody ever calls in sick, you know. Yeah. And, you know, but, you know, the reward of that, as you know, how many people have worked for you, you know, younger, older, gone on to do other things, come back and talk about the experience of working with a small business and that hands-on, and the stuff that you can teach that can't learn in a book, you know, that life lessons. I have kids come to me, never wrote a check before. Like, how do you not, you don't know how to write a check. I'm like, well, you're writing one today. You know, I mean, just things that, you know, and it's tough, you know, because it, you know, it better never close, right? You know, so and if it don't, I mean, somebody's got to run it, you know. And, but, but, like I say, the rewards outweigh all of it, you know. And so we have this for you today. And it says, whereas the National Black Business Month was founded in 2004 by Frederick E. Jordan Sr. and John William Templeton to recognize the success, milestone, and historical progress of black-owned businesses and entrepreneurs throughout the country, and to encourage their continued growth and development. And whereas there are approximately 2 million black-owned businesses, which according to the US Census Bureau, account for about 10% of US businesses and about 30% of all minority-owned businesses. And whereas 32% of black-owned businesses are in healthcare, 35% of black-owned businesses are women-owned. And whereas Calver County is home to black-owned businesses that provide family-supporting jobs, careers to residents throughout the county, serving as a driving force for Calver County Minority Business Alliance. And whereas the local governments, chambers of commerce, and business associations throughout Maryland must continue working towards inclusion, empowerment, and support for black-owned enterprises. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Calver County, that the month of August 2023 be celebrated and recognized as National Black Business Month in Calver County. Be it further proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners encourages its citizens to support black-owned businesses in their communities, and pause to reflect on the numerous contributions of black enterprises, entrepreneurs, excuse me, it's not Monday, is it? In our county, given under our hands and seal this first day of August 23, signed by all five county commissioners.
See the lens. Smile. One, two, three. Thank you much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yes, man.
Good to see you.
Good, good, good. Good, good.
Thank you for coming in. So our next proclamation is for Digital County Survey Award. Commissioner Rasa and Director Stephen?
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Stephen Paera, Director of Technology Services. The Digital County Survey is an annual survey that examines the technology programs and plans of US county governments. The survey is conducted by the Center of Digital Government in partnership with the National Association of Counties, or NACO. The survey identifies the best technology practices among US counties, including initiatives that streamline government services, encourage collaboration, enhance cybersecurity, and apply innovative and emerging technologies to county priorities. The survey looks at activities across the whole of the organization, not just within technology services. Also, all US county governments are invited to participate in the survey. Calvert County entered, and of the 3,000 eligible counties in the US, we came first. Feel free to clap. We won this award through great collaboration and working as a team across the whole of government, breaking down silos, cutting through the politics, and working together towards a common goal. To quote Harry Truman, "It is amazing what you can accomplish when you do not care who gets the credit." There is a lot to be said for individual excellence, and it's something that we all strive for. But together, we can be better. We can push the boundaries of the possible, and hopefully, one day, enable people to interact with our government with the same ease that they do with Amazon or Google. We strive to provide the best possible services to our constituents in the most efficient way possible, and we are doing an excellent job. For a county of our size, NACO said, "Nobody is doing it better." Winning the Digital Counties Award is an exceptional achievement, and the result of exceptional individuals performing at the best of their ability over a prolonged period of time. The people that come before you today should rightly feel proud of all the work that they've done. Now, I would like some of these individuals to come forward and be recognized. Please step forward, say your name, your department, and the technology that you have helped bring to fruition.
Hello, Commissioners. My name is Colin Robbins. I am the Enterprise Applications Manager here at Calver County. I've worked on several projects over the years, but the biggest one of late has been Workday.
I'm Jonathan Lee. I'm the Change Management and Communications Manager. I'm going to be helping facilitate a lot of the change in the county to promote a more efficient and more adaptation of innovative and emerging technologies.
Hi, I'm Cat Poff. I'm the Deputy Director of Technology Services and the Cyber Security Manager. And I've been here for a while. So I was a network administrator, and also now I work to keep our networks safe from the bad guys.
Stanley Harris, Emergency Communications. We partnered with TS and brought a county-wide cybersecurity assessment that made recommendations, made the county more secure. We also implemented a state-of-the-art public safety radio system and worked to dispatch police, fire, and EMS remotely. Last year, we were able to go to Ocean City for eight hours. We answered 911, dispatched police and fire, and nobody in Calver County knew the difference.
Brandon Vexford on the Applications Team, and I work on the Public Safety Applications.
I'm Joe Fox. Still have a lot to learn here, but I've got good people teaching me. Working mostly with Brandon on the public safety side.
Good morning, Commissioners. Andrew Miller. I work for the Asset Management Team. I'm the Computer Services Supervisor. So initially, when I got brought on to Calver County Government, we were one help desk. And they saw me, and they said, man, we need a second help desk. So that's where I came in. So we've kind of split off and done our own projects. So in addition to putting out fires, we also work on projects as well on asset management.
Robert Denton, Infrastructure Manager. I'm Andrew's supervisor. As you can see, that's a job in itself. But most of my work is connecting all of our sites. We have about 140 sites throughout Calver County that we have connected a lot involving public safety. We had a big project last year with Stanley Harris where we connected a lot of his tower sites. So, yeah, that's my background.
Uve Pappas. I work with Colin, Brandon, and Joe on the Apps Team as a System Analyst.
Good morning. Ken Guyer, Recreation Systems Analyst with Parks and Recreation. And I oversee our RecTrack Recreation Software, our transition to Explore Recreation, and our Forop Golf Course Management Software.
Good morning, Beth Richmond.
Thank you.
Deputy Director of Finance and Budget. And I just have one word to say, Workday.
Good morning. Rachel Griffith with Finance and Budget, Fiscal Officer, and Workday.
Diane Phelps, Counts Payable, Workday.
Good morning, Commissioners. Ashley Staples-Reed, Special Projects Program Manager with the County Administrator's Office. And I am facilitating your initiative for the broadband expansion throughout the county.
Dina Davis, Human Resources Deputy Director. I recently served as the Human Capital Management for the Workday Functional Implementation. Proud to represent HR. We've always been on the cutting edge in terms of making our work more efficient using technology.
Good morning. Danielle Eldridge, Operations Manager, and Workday.
Hi, I'm Sherry Parker. I work in Finance and Budget in AP Department, and Workday.
Good morning. Casey Waldron, Finance and Budget, and Workday.
Hi, I'm Sharon Strand, the Director of Finance and Budget. And just to reiterate what Stephen had said, Workday was a huge project for many departments within the county, and it was very successful. Still learning some things, but I can't thank everyone enough for their help and assistance in getting this project done. So thank you.
Kevin Schmidt, Broadcast Manager. Our team helped develop the hybrid meeting format with Technology Services and enabling live closed captioning for all government meetings.
Mary Beth Cook, Director of Planning and Zoning, including inspections and permits. I'm here for a big thank you, all the help for the IPS system, IPS Info, our permit tracking system, including Encompass, which allows you to now submit permits and schedule inspections online.
Well, let me just say, you all are amazing, and you have done wonderful work. What a great award, and you make it easy for me to come to work because I know nothing. I really don't. I know I have to change my password soon, and I'm already in a sweat over that, but I know that someone from your area will come and will help me, so give yourselves a round of applause. Whereas Calvert County Government has been bestowed with the prestigious recognition as the number-one county government in up to 150,000 population category of the Digital County Survey, and whereas this remarkable achievement was earned by the collective efforts of not only the Department of Technology Services, but also the exceptional contributions from various county departments as a result of its commitment to embracing cutting-edge technologies such as cloud management platforms, have no idea, advanced data analytics, and artificial intelligence systems, among others, as highlighted in the Digital County Survey Award presented by the National Association of Counties and Center for Digital Government. And whereas Calvert County Government has continuously demonstrated its dedication to innovation and progress through various implemented innovative technologies such as Workday, online permit processing, remote 911 capabilities, website redesigns, automated scheduling software, golf course management software, case management software, and many more, in an effort to streamline county processes, increase efficiency, and optimize workloads. And now therefore be it proclaimed that the Calvert County Board of County Commissioners recognizes and celebrates the outstanding achievement of Calvert County Government for earning the prestigious Digital County Survey Award, and commends the Department of Technology Services and the entire county workforce in championing technological innovation, cybersecurity, and digital equity initiatives for the betterment of the community. Be it therefore proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners expresses profound gratitude to all employees and stakeholders by acknowledging their dedication and commitment to transforming Calvert County into a leading example of progressive and forward-thinking governance, setting new standards for excellence in public service, given under our hands and seal this first day of August, signed by all five county commissioners. Thank you.
Well, see, I'm afraid I'm going to block him. Can you still see him? I don't think they can, can you?
Smile behind the lens. Smile for a superb job well done. Thank you much. Congratulations, everybody. Thank you.
Good seeing you guys. How you doing? Good, good, good. Just big guys, you know. Oh, he's like this big now. Is he really? Yeah. 30 pounds. What? Yeah. Yeah. Table scraps. Do you get those chewy boxes? We get everything. So we really do want to take this time to thank our staff because they do such an outstanding job, and we don't want to belittle this award. We were number one in the entire country for counties our size, so that's quite an accomplishment, so we can't thank you all enough for what you do for the citizens of Calvert County every day. This is just a small show of appreciation, but we appreciate what you do every single day. Thank you. Good. That brings us to a public hearing. The Department of Public Works revising solid waste tipping fee schedule for the fiscal year 2024. Come on up.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
My name is Maria Lubarska. I'm a Solid Waste Division Chief. There is one public hearing scheduled for today. This hearing was duly advertised, and the certificate of publication is made part of the record of a hearing. Citizens were invited to provide comment on the hearing after the presentation has concluded.
Come on up and take a seat. We haven't bitten anybody today, so you're safe.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
The hearing has a comment period following the brief presentation. Anyone here in person must sign in on the sheet next to their attorney to speak. Background. The Department of Public Works, DPW, the Solid Waste Division, SWD, and the Enterprise Fund charged several fees for the self-supporting operation. Of those fees, solid waste tipping fees are calculated using the prior fiscal year's adopted tipping fees multiplied by Consumer Pricing Index, CPI. Discussion. On May 23, 2023, DPW received a letter from the Gartner of Maryland with a proposed fiscal year 2024 tipping fees for the hauling and disposal of municipal solid waste, MSW, from the appeal transfer station. The fees are increased based on the 100% of the CPI for all urban consumers changed for the preceding calendar year according to the contract extension requirement. With a 6.62% increase, the fiscal year 2024 tipping fee rate at Appeal Transfer Station for residential customer shall be $86.54 per ton. For commercial customers and residents of a county other than Calvert, it shall be set at $95.77 per ton. Fiscal impact. The fiscal year 2024 Solid Waste Division revenue budget will increase along with the fiscal year 2024 SWD expenditure budget as outbound rates increase in greater proportion to inbound rates. Should it be necessary for a budget adjustment, the division will request one later in the fiscal year. Conclusion. DPW recommends that the Board of County Commissioners review and consider taking action on the proposed fiscal year 2024 solid waste tipping fee increase to allow for the continued collection and hauling of MSW from Calvert County to the contractor's landfill facility in King George, Virginia. The floor has been opened for public comment on the hearing. Resolution 6-89 was adopted and is available here today to maintain the order and decorum of the governmental process. Those attending in person will be invited to speak first. For those joining virtually, if you wish to speak, please press star nine or use the raise your hand function. Virtual participants will be identified by their screen name or last four digits of their phone number, and unmuted one at a time. Speakers will be asked to state their name and address. Speakers who are providing comment as individuals will be allocated two minutes. Speakers who are the designated representative of a group will be allocated five minutes.
We do have, no one has signed up in person. I assume there's no one here who wishes to speak. We have one person who's joined us virtually, who's raised his hand, Mr. Cormier.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Joseph Cormier from Owings, Maryland. We've seen the water and sewer rise by 16%, and I just would like to know that this 6.62% increase is going to be enough to maintain this enterprise fund, or if we need to adjust that further? And as we're increasing our build-out here in the county, is the landfill large enough to accommodate, you know, is that part of our adequate public facilities? I don't remember. And, you know, lastly, I want to say I appreciate DPW adding credit card ability to check out at the appeal station. It's very much appreciated. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your question. This increase of 6.62% is just based on the contact extension requirements, so we're just going to do what we have to do to cover the cost of this operation, but I should say that more fees are coming probably for the next public hearing. We're looking at different things, we were like small things we were doing for free, and it will not influence our residents too much, mostly like maybe related to different events. I'll not say more at this point, but we're looking at different operations to increase the efficiency, but for this particular one, I think, hope it will be enough. And as far as landfill capacity, we're trying not to put too much on our landfill. We're trying to just haul our waste to King George Landfill, Virginia. That's a part of all this contract we have is waste management.
So I did have one question for you. Did both rates go up 6.62%?
Yes.
So both commercial and residential? Okay.
Yes. And also the expenditure side.
Yes, okay. Yep, good. And did you look at your expenses and you determine that that is going to be enough at this time?
So the increase is based on the CPI increase, and then it's a straight past through for us based on the contract.
Understand.
It maintains our solvency.
Yeah. But that was negotiated on a contract that was signed at some...
It was a 20-year contract that we're in our second-year extension of that currently.
Right. And that contract says that every year it'll be increased by the CPI.
Yes.
So it's sort of an automatic thing.
Yes.
Correct. Any other questions?
No.
I don't know.
Have done. Actions, motions?
Do we need a motion or consent?
We do need a motion.
So I'm moving to close the record, approve and adopt resolution amending the solid waste fees as set forth therein effective August 8 of 2023.
Second. Have a motion, the second that we close the record and approve and adopt the resolution amending the solid waste fees as set forth therein effective August 8, 2023. Is there any discussion on that motion?
No.
You read none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So that brings us to some awards. The first on the list is an Employee Recognition Committee, 2023 July Employee of the Month Award. Morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Ladies and gentlemen, Amalia Pleakton with the Employee Recognition Committee to recognize the employee of the month for July. Employee of the Month acknowledges an individual's superior job performance regarding effective public contact, respect for fellow employees, quality and/or quantity of work, contributions toward organizational morale, or actions that improve the county's public image. Anyone can nominate an employee. The forms are on the ERC webpage. Our July 2023 Employee of the Month is Uve Pappas, Systems Analyst 2 for our Technology Services Department. Would you please come forward to be recognized? Uve Pappas is being recognized for his hard work and long hours in transitioning Calvert County Government from FinPlus to Workday. This daunting transition involved an extensive volume of data extraction and configuration. Recognizing the challenge, Uve volunteered, his support, and proactively acquired new software proficiencies to facilitate the discovery, extraction, cleansing, and validation of the financial data. Over six months, Uve actively engaged with stakeholders from several teams within the Department of Finance, business assets, procurement, suppliers, payroll, and more. Demonstrating his adeptness, Uve effectively provided these teams with meticulously-formatted data. Without Uve's commitment in undertaking these imperative data exports, this transition to Workday would have been rendered implausible. He went above and beyond his work duties and truly impressed his coworkers. The ERC is pleased to join the Board of County Commissioners in recognizing this remarkable employee. Thank you, Steven, for your nomination. Thank you, Commissioners, for your continued support of the ERC, and thank you, Uve, for your outstanding contribution to Calvert County Government.
Good morning. Steven Ferrera, Director of Technology Services. Uve typically hides from the limelight, so a large chunk of me is tempted to make this speech as long as possible, just so I can see if I can get his face to match that shirt. But Uve is a truly exceptional employee. He saved the county literally hundreds of thousands of dollars through his amazing skills and his ability to learn and implement things quickly. His implementation of SCCM, ServiceNow, are exceptional. Generally, if there is a problem and nobody's really sure how to fix it, then we turn to Uve. Uve speaks at a million miles an hour and is able to process information at an unnatural speed. He hasn't said much, has he? I mean, yeah. He had the level of technical knowledge that baffles even people in TS. Uve once learned a programming language overnight, and he did that so that he could help finance and budget, clean data for the Workday rollout. Learning a programming language overnight is not normal. Neither is Uve's ethic or work ethic or capability as a whole. He is a truly exceptional employee that is quiet, apparently, but most of the time he's pretty fun to work with. He gets on really well with all of his colleagues, and he's well-liked within TS. I want to say thank you, Uve, for representing Technology Services in the manner that you do. You're a truly exceptional employee. Thank you.
Commissioner Hart's having a hard time comprehending somebody speak so little. Faster than me. That's what Steven said.
And now the ERC would like to present a Pride and Quality Award, which acknowledges exemplary job performance that results in greater efficiencies or extraordinary broad-reaching public service. It is an enormous honor to introduce Jenny Plummer Welker, Long Range Planner for Department of Planning and Zoning, who is receiving a Pride and Quality Award. Jenny, please join us up front. Oops.
She's not new.
She's very stealthy. Today, we recognize Jenny's expertise, professionalism, and unreserved willingness to help. Her extraordinary public service has greatly improved both the workplace and the public perception of our government. Jenny was nominated by Nathan Mavius of Technology Services for her work with the Planning Commission. This is another great example of interdepartmental collaboration. Jenny has become a central figure of the Planning Commission's meetings. She has worked diligently to update Town Center master plans and has shared her expertise with the public on many occasions. Her appreciation of Calvert County and Maryland history makes her insight invaluable. Jenny's hard work and dedication have helped the public understand complicated processes, and she has become a trusted the public understand complicated processes, and she has become a trusted face of Calvert County Government. Jenny's professionalism, extensive knowledge, and care for her colleagues make her an excellent coworker. She has been, and she has long been essential in guiding her teammates through complex procedures. She has an unfailing positive attitude and is always willing to offer advice and institutional knowledge. Her dependable work ethic has inspired many others to emulate her commitment to Calvert County. Her mentorship allows us to better serve our residents. And it is my particular honor to, to recognize Jenny. Um, I interviewed her while studying Calvert County land use as an undergrad. She gave me a nineteen ninety-four zoning map, and I thought it was the coolest map. I still treasure it. Um, so it's my delight to join the ERC in recognizing Jenny Plummer Welker with the Pride and Quality Award. Thank you, B O C C, for your continued support, and thank you, Jenny, for inspiring us all. And if anyone would like to come forward?
Well, I think while, while we're waiting, I think the chair would entertain a motion that would bar Jenny from retiring?
I'll second that motion.
You can't, but someone up here could.
Mr. President, HR did inform me that retirement procedures have changed, and they have been extended. Um, so, um, sorry, Jenny, I, I tried. I, I, I went bad for you, but it, it didn't work. I, you're stuck?
You're stuck.
Yeah.
Good morning, Commissioners. Ladies and gentlemen, let's let Mary Beth talk, and then I'll, I'll follow up.
Mary Beth Cook, Director of Planning and Zoning. So today, we're going to celebrate Jenny. Um, the sadness can come at the end of the month when she does actually retire. There can't be a better employee in Calvert Government than Jenny Plummer Welker. She's a model employee. Her ethics, her work, she, I just can't say, there isn't enough time to stand here and say. So I just want to provide a few examples. So it's not enough that she does her work and she knows so much about the history of the county. Um, the thing that impressed me was during the pandemic when we were meeting by Zoom with the Planning Commission. We all needed to get on a half hour early to make sure everyone's technology was working, and she came up with a little game. So every week, she would bring aerial photography, and we had to guess where it was in Calvert County. So just, you know, the little things that she goes above and beyond every single day. Never says no. She may say no, but she'll never say no. That's a story for another day. Um, Jenny, thank you for everything that you've done for Calvert County and for planning and zoning. I, it's a pleasure working with you.
Just in case I forget something.
You have a speech?
Well, I am thrilled to receive the Pride and Quality Award today, and I appreciate the nomination and the selection for this award. I cannot do my work without my wonderful teammates in long-range planning, Jessica Getano and Kat Lockwood, my supervisor Carolyn Sunderland and Director Mary Beth Cook, and my wonderful coworkers in planning and zoning. The work that we do requires the concerted effort of the entire county government from the, from community resources to economic development, to finance and budget, and, um, human resources? I did say that. Anyway, and, uh, Parks and Recreation, Public Works, Public Safety, the county administrator's staff, and the county administrator, the county attorney and his staff, and then, um, Communications and Media Relations. It's work that involves everyone from the buildings and ground staff for setting up the meeting, the community meetings, to the, uh, computer techni- technicians for the, allowing the work that we do, to community and media relations, who do everything from traditional designing postcards, and we mail them out for the kickoff of our planning updates, to, um, high-tech, as Kevin mentioned, the hybrid meetings, which are very complex. We've done workshops which bring in people live at the Dunkirk Firehouse and people coming in virtually, and it, it went off without a hitch. So I cannot do my work without all the other staff. It is my privilege to work with the Planning Commission. They are top notch, and the other county boards, committees, and commissions, the community groups, like the citizen, sorry, the, uh, Calvert Complete Count Committee for the Census, and the task force. I'd like to give special recognition to my mother Jane, my husband Greg Welker, my sister Jackie, and my other family members who provide me support, along with the community, and then also, um, my teachers, professors, mentors, and the, um, wonderful staff here at the county. It is with much gratitude and honor that I accept this award. Thank you.
She hadn't retired yet. Consultant.
You are welcome. Thank you.
We have one last award. Department of Parks and Recreation, Director Nizol.
Good morning, Commissioner Shannon Nizol, Director of Parks and Recreation. So this is a new scholarship award that, uh, that we are doing through Parks and Recreation. The Thurman Gray Scholarship Program has been around for a while, uh, which has gone, uh, primarily to offer up, uh, low, no-cost programs within the, um, Parks and Recreation Department for, uh, people to participate in that may have a financial need to be able to do that. Uh, a few years ago, when the Board of County Commissioners adopted our revenue and fee, um, policy and manual, it added an education program or an education award to the Thurman Gray Scholarship Program, and this is our first award from that, which offers a one thousand dollar, uh, scholarship to a graduating senior, um, high school senior, um, for the pursuit, um, of a education in a Parks, in the Parks and Recreation field. So this could be anything from, um, sports management, environmental education, uh, leisure services, hospitality management, those types of things. So for a student that is pursuing those types of, um, fields, we have this, this program for that. Some of the, um, uh, the, well, the funding for this program comes from events like the Chesapeake Hills, um, Golf Classic, and our annual pickleball tournament, and that funds the scholarship program. So we're very grateful for everyone that participates, uh, in those programs. And this year, our first recipient is Oliver Simon. Oliver, if you could come on up. So Oliver is a graduate of Calvert High School, and he will be pursuing interpretive biology and natural history at Frostburg State University. And, uh, we are very proud of you, Oliver. So congratulations. It's truly an outstanding accomplishment, um, what you have, uh, done in your high school career and your community involvement, and the Scholarship Committee really recognized your exceptional talents, potential, and the positive impact that you have demonstrated, um, in both your academic pursuits and, um, that community involvement. So once again, congratulations, your scholarship award.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. And if you'd like, would come up here and take a picture with Commissioners?
So that brings us to consent. There are four items under consent today. Item one, Department of Planning and Zoning Historic Preservation Tax Credit 2022-07 Hampton Historic District. Item two, Department of Finance and Budget Award Recommendation RFP 2023-008 ADA Self-Assessment and Transition Plan. Item three, Department of Finance and Budget Award Recommendation ITB 2023-043 Pavement Maintenance Countywide. Item four, Department of Community Resources Physical Year 2024 Senior Care Waitlist Reduction Grant Funding. Are there any objections to those items under consent?
No.
Hearing none, those items will be adopted as presented. That brings us to new business. Item one, Department of Planning and Zoning Text Amendment Cases TA 23-05 and TA 23-06, Amendments to Calvert County's Zoning Ordinance and Solomon's Town Center Zoning Ordinance. Director Cook, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Mary Beth Cook, Director of Planning and Zoning. With me is Rachel O'Shea, our zoning planner. So we are here to discuss and present to you for the first time text amendment, um, 2305 and 2306. Um, just to note, they were submitted prior to the deadline, um, for the resolution, um, nineteen twenty-three that we passed to put a hold on text amendments until the new zoning ordinance update. So they did make the deadline. And, um, if you don't mind, we'll forego reading the memo, and, um, Rachel will take us through the presentation.
Good morning, Commissioners. The purpose of today's work session is to review and discuss the proposed text amendments 23-05 to allow multifamily dwellings within the D1 sub-district of the Solomon's Town Center, and 23-06 to increase the allowable density from seven to fourteen units per acre with the use of transferable development rights. We're here to request direction to move forward with a work session with the Planning Commission to begin the public amendment process. Some background information, staff received a text amendment request from the Solomon's Island SH1 LLC on behalf of Solomon's Joint Venture LLC for two text amendments. One, to conditionally request, um, that multifamily residential units be permitted within the D1 sub-district of the Solomon's Town Center, and to increase the base density from seven units per acre to fourteen units with the use of TDRs. The application stated that, uh, circumstances to justify the proposal included redevelopment of aged and outdated outfits, to create jobs that would aid in economic development, and the need for Solomon's community for assisted living and memory care facilities. And this would benefit the community by expanding allowable uses within the town center, maintain, maintains the needed, um, conference space within the county, and will provide additional tax revenue. This is a map of the Solomon's Town Center showing the different sub-districts. We will be talking mainly about the subdis- sub-area D, um, with specific interest in the D1, which is in the center of Solomon's, just north of Lower Road. Some background information from the Solomon's, uh, Town Center Zoning Ordinance. Section two dash seven is for the planning areas and zoning of sub, the sub-areas. The Solomon's Town Center is divided into six planning areas, each of which is further divided then into zoning sub-areas. These sub-areas are established to regulate appropriate locations for different types of land uses within the town center. The appropriate location for a particular land use is determined by the stated objectives of the Solomon's Master Plan, as well as environmental suitability, the location of public facilities and services, and existing land uses within the facility. Sub-area zoning policies for the planning sub-area D. Planning area D is further divided into sub, zoning sub-areas as shown on the official Solomon's Town Center zoning map. The following policies related to the zoning of each sub-area are included in the Solomon's Master Plan and are intended to be implemented and enforced through the ordinance. Sub-areas D1 and D4, this sub-area is designated for commercial use because of its convenient transportation access and because it is relatively isolated from residential uses and the waterfront areas. D2 and D3, these areas are designated primarily for residential use with small-scale commercial and wet boat storage use. And then D5, this area is designated for residential, commercial, and marine-related industrial use. Master plans for large undeveloped land holdings are encouraged. So that's just some background for you for, to get you familiar, familiar with the sub-areas of Solomon's. This is the existing Solomon's, uh, table of land uses. And then this is the proposed text amendment 23-05. So what we're looking to do here is add a C for the, um, residential types. You can see in the center of your screen, under the column of north of Lower Road, you'll see D1 is white, and below there for the different, um, types of attached residential units, adding a C for conditionally permitted. The conditions will not change. That is on the next side. Um, they will stay the same. Specifically for, um, the dwelling attached multifamily, the conditions include, the density shall not be, not exceed that which is permitted by Article Five of the Solomon's Town Center Zoning Ordinance, and number two, in the C7 sub-areas, at least sixty percent of the site shall be reserved for non-residential uses. So now we'll transition over and review the proposed text amendment for 23-06. This is the proposed density change. This is section, Article Five of the Calvert County Zoning Ordinance Residential Development Requirements, uh, five dash one, residential density, lots, area, lot width, setback height, and requirements for all districts. So the proposal here is to increase the, uh, base density with TDRs. Um, so normally, your base density is just one, one unit per acre with use of, of, um, TDRs, depending on the sub-area that is then allowed to be increased. So for most of the sub-areas in Solomon's, um, the max with TDRs is seven per acre, which is what, what D, the D-sub area was. The proposal is to go from that seven to fourteen. As you can see, for some of the other ones, C six and C seven, one, you can go up to ten units per acre, and C seven, it's, goes up to four per acre. And then this is the, a language change that would be needed within the Solomon's Town Center Zoning Ordinance. This is sec- section five dash one point oh eight, residential density, minimum lot size and lot width requirements in the Solomon's Town Center. And all we're doing here is adding, adding in the language that distinguishes the D-sub area to allow the increased density for a maximum of fourteen dwelling units per acre with the application of D, TDRs. Um, with the rest of the sub-areas, um, the base density would be increased to a maximum of seven dwelling units, uh, with the application of TDRs. So that's the extent of the proposed text amendments and language changes that would be needed. Uh, staff recommends that the Board of County Commissioners discuss the proposed text amendments and direct staff to move forward with a work session with the Planning Commission to begin the amendment process.
Questions?
So I do have a couple of questions. Your D1 district, how far north does that go? I'm seeing Lower Street on the south side. How far north? What, what reference point can you give me on the north side, on page, uh, on page five?
So I believe it goes just, um, I'm trying to remember the name of the restaurant there.
Boomerang.
Yes. It's either, I, I want to say it's either includes or does not include. It's, it's very close, but that's, that would be the north reference.
Okay. And what year did we enact? Okay. And what year did we enact the different districts down there, the D1 through D5? What year was that done in?
That was in 2009, 10-ish. Yeah, somewhere around there.
Okay. And you just need further guidance from us to move this to the planning commission for work session as?
Correct. So the next steps would be a work session with the planning commission, any discussion with them, then we send it out for agency comment, take it back to the planning commission, and at their direction, schedule a joint public hearing with the commissioners and the board of county, and the planning commission.
Okay.
The dwellings that you're proposing to go from seven to 14, will they be rental or for sale?
We don't place a restriction on that. So we're just doing the amendment to allow it, and it could be either.
There are options. Either board wanted to put a condition on the limit of what the density could be used for. That would be a possibility.
So what's the density in E, just for me, for a reference? The end of Dow Road?
So that is not called out separately, so it would be included in the all other subareas, which is one per acre for base, but with TDRs can go up to seven.
And everything south of Lower Road is what?
South of Lower Road, there's multiple districts.
Yeah, there's many.
So, so south of Lower Road, you've got a couple of your C, is mostly just C. But, so the white is mixed use, and your yellow is designated for residential. And this map will need to be updated, but the green is an agricultural preservation district.
So what's the density in C3 and C5? Can you tell me that?
Same, max of seven.
So what's 14? Can you tell me that?
What's 14? So in Solomon's, there's a max of the density of 14, nothing that goes up that high. The max that it will go up to is 10 in the C6. However, it is different when you, for C1 subarea, that is the only subdistrict in Solomon's that goes by a different set of regulations. It's called a foreign base code. And with TDRs for attached dwelling units, multifamily, or duplex, that can go up to 20 per acre with use of TDRs.
In C1?
In C6. That's the core district of Solomon's, yes.
So that's, once you get past, once you go across the bridge and get past where Kingfisher's is?
Yes.
Everything on the left, all the way down to the end?
All the way down to?
Yeah, it's actually cut off in this map.
Before you make the turn to?
So that's 20, that's 20. Everything else is seven, except you said there was one small area where you can get 10?
C6 goes up to 10, and C7 can go up to four.
And what is C5?
I mean, C6 and C7.
What's C5?
That's what'd be included in the all other subareas, so max of seven.
What is built in C1 now?
C1 is the core district. It's where, it's the other side of the street from the boardwalk. So all of the restaurants and businesses, yeah, that's the C1.
Homes, single-family homes mostly.
Yes.
And what is C3?
Max of seven.
And C7?
That one is limited to four, max of four per acre.
And D2?
Max of seven. Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you said C2. D2, so that would be included in the text amendment proposal to go up to 14.
So we want to raise everything from Lower Road up to Burger King, McDonald's, to 14?
Yes, sir.
So, in my first four years, my inexperience led me to make a lot of mistakes. I've fallen on that sword a many times. I've never shied away from the mistakes I made. It's my fault that I didn't understand some of the information that I thought I knew and trusted, this, that, and the other. I was elected for no apartments. People have made that clear to me. This is a gateway for apartments. I was elected for no high density. People make no mistake about that when they see me. People live here for the rural character. We talk about this constantly, about we don't have the infrastructure, that what are we going to do when CRE needs septic? What are we going to do? There's no plan. There was talk of where pipelines were going to run and everything like this. We had discussions this morning about a problem with water, how we got to flush the system. We do not have the infrastructure in place for high-density housing. The whole time I ran on this one, I heard it constantly through it. I have not seen any examples of why we need this. What I have heard, I have heard senior apartments. That was said to me very clearly eight years ago. I was standing at Southern Pines, and the previous board before me, Antonio Donnell, had worked out a deal, and a guy walked up to me and says, Mike Hart, you just got here, and you got a problem. You don't have enough places for senior apartments. We've not generated anything for senior apartments that are affordable for seniors that live on a fixed income, live on just their social security check in my eight years. This density is not going to lead to that. So anybody sitting out there saying that, oh, all of a sudden, we're going to have a place for seniors to go? No, no. And I just want to make very, very clear to the people that put me in office, that come and talk to me all the time, that I have no support whatsoever for any high density, or am I going to be a part of anything that alludes to that. No disrespect to any other board members on here, or planning commissioner, anywhere else, but it was a very clear message sent to me of why I was elected.
And I'd like to back that up with, when I was campaigning, and even before then, I've been very active in the community for years, from Dunkirk to Solomon's. X on high density. People do not want it. And during our campaign as well, it was really stressed by fellow commissioners that have already been on the board that we do not have the infrastructure. So for me, I can't go against what my constituents put me in here to do.
So apartments don't fall under the density requirements of housing, correct?
Yes, it would be included in multifamily. Multifamily would be?
Motel rooms?
Oh, motel rooms? No, no.
Hotels, hotels.
There's no density for hotel rooms?
No.
You can have as many of them as you want?
If a hotel is permitted in that area.
And a hotel is permitted in all of C and D?
I can, I can go back and look at where hotel rooms are permitted within Solomon's. The current hotel that's in, I believe that is up in D4, is where the current one is located, or what's it, it might be D4 or D5. But I can go back and pull that for all of them.
I think some of the concern is opening up, setting a precedent for doubling density in these areas, and once you start, where you stop. Planning and zoning, have any recommendation on what that would look like?
Well, if, if the concern is having additional housing for seniors, again, you could put a condition on the density that the increased density would only be for age-restricted housing.
Yes, but that's a slippery slope too, because that's also not having any type of financial restriction whatsoever. So you could say, hey, these are 55 and older, these are 85 and older, whatever, but if they're $4,000 a month, or $3,000 a month, and somebody's on a fixed income, that doesn't address those needs. So that's the play on words all the time. And I was played that way eight years ago, and it had been, it has been put in my face monthly for eight years about the mistakes I made back then. So I am not making any mistakes, and clear on the record, and it can be anywhere, my inexperience led me down that road. I'm not that same man today.
So there's, so you start out, you build a senior apartment. Is there any avenue or pathway to convert those in the future?
Typically, we, there's a covenant that gets recorded with that, and we have had an instance where we did, it was changed. And I'm trying to remember the process that we followed. It was, there was some housing over in Prince Frederick, and they wanted to take it out, take the restriction off, and I believe they were able to do so.
So I guess following from Commissioner Hart's point, you know, even though you say that today, we have a precedent where you can come in later and change that to anything you want.
If it's permitted.
Right. So saying that we can put a restriction on today, that says there are only, in this category, doesn't really mean anything. Once you build that structure, you know, it's there. So. But today's decision is just about moving it forward to the planning commission to start the process.
And it'll still come back in front of us, correct?
That's correct. We will see it again, for the public.
I do have one question. If the text amendment's calling for it just in D1, why are we proposing it in 2, 3, 4?
So after conversations with the county attorney's office, so there is land use law that we have to follow, and there is spot zoning, which is illegal, where there currently are multifamily is permitted in D3 and D2. It was the advice of the attorney's office that we include D1, D2, and D3 in the increased density, so as to not be spot zoning.
Well, if that's true...
The request of the applicant was specifically for multifamily, which, so multifamily out of all of the attached dwelling types is the most?
The highest use.
Highest use. So if you're going to allow the highest use of residential use, you might as well include the other attached dwelling types.
So if we did all those combined, that would potentially change the total future of Solomon's, without a doubt?
Well, even though that you're changing the density, there are other factors at play that could limit the amount of density you could get on any one parcel. You know, there's not a lot of space in Solomon's.
There's a lot of build-out in those areas.
Well, in that particular area, there's a couple that...
There's a few vacant properties, yes.
And you can always redevelop.
Yeah, true.
I remember a man telling me one time he wanted to take a bunch of piers and put a whole bunch of condos and parking garages and pools, all the way across that pier area there, had it laid out, showed me the print and everything. So if you can imagine it, you can attempt it.
If you're looking for direction today from us?
Yes.
I don't think there's any appetite to upzone everything you've got on the table today.
Not mine.
If we hold it to the D1, correct?
No, but what's before us today is to open it all up. There's no appetite for that. You can start a process if you want, but when it comes back to us, it's not going anywhere.
Is there a recommended change you would like to see, to take forward?
Well, that depends on the attorney.
Correct.
I mean, this is, this is simply before you, to allow, to afford the applicant due process, it's not pre-deciding the case. The deadline has passed for any other type of zoning amendment change to be considered that is not an emergency or necessary for public health, safety, or welfare until after the zoning ordinance has been read adopted. So I'm not sure that different guidance is necessary, or even could be capable of moving forward until a new zoning ordinance is adopted.
Right, and I don't want the applicant to have any false expectations. I'm just saying that if what's before us today is how this has to move forward, it's not going to move. That's too large an area.
I agree.
So, you're looking for guidance. I think that we're just giving you guidance. We are not going to upzone everything from Lower Road to, I don't even know how far north that, there you go.
Yeah.
So that's your guidance. Do we need a motion for that, Mr. Counselor?
Well, staff is asking that we be able to follow the process of 1-6.01 of the zoning ordinance, so we do ask for a motion to forward this on to the planning commission for them to consider it and then schedule a public hearing.
It's a formality? Is that what we're dealing with here?
It's a formality, I think.
And there is two separate text amendments, so the board could always advise us to move 23-05 forward and not 23-06, or vice versa.
No, we have to give both due process, but ultimately, you could approve one and not the other. You don't have to approve both, or deny both.
So I'll move that we direct staff to move forward a work session with the planning commission to begin the public amendment process.
Second.
Have a motion in a second that we allow staff to move forward with the process for text amendment. I don't have the numbers in front of me.
TA 2305 and TA 2306.
Thank you. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
You have some direction. Thank you. That brings us to item two, Department of Planning and Zoning Transferable Development Rights Reserve Resale Price Policy. Director Cook?
Good morning, Mary Beth Cook, Director of Planning and Zoning. With me is Jennifer David. She is our rural planner, and we are here to clarify a policy, the intent of the TDR reserve, where the county purchases and resells TDRs. And I'm going to let Jen read the memo.
Good morning Commissioners.
Good morning.
Good morning.
For the background, the Transferable Development Rights Reserve program allows citizens to sell and purchase TDRs through county government instead of through private buyer-seller negotiations. Recommended by the TDR committee, the TDR reserve program was adopted by the Board of County Commissioners on October 19, 2021, as Chapter 33 of the county code. The goal of the reserve is to create a stable, dependable market for both buyers and sellers, as well as to increase participation in the county's land preservation program. The reserve is set up as a revolving fund to continually purchase TDRs from TDR owners and resell them to the public on a first-come, first-served basis, thereby facilitating the transfer of development away from targeted preservation areas. The reserve is funded solely by the resale of acquired TDRs and is designed to be self-sustaining. For the discussion, two applications to purchase a total of 15 TDRs from the reserved were received in fiscal year 2023 and are pending final approval. Planning and zoning made offers to the applicants to purchase the TDRs acquired in the previous fiscal year at the approved fair market value plus an administrative fee of 1% for a total of $4,545 per TDR. Chapter 33 of the local code indicates that the resale price is to be set equal to the currently approved fair market value of the TDR, plus a 1% administrative fee. Applying the currently approved fiscal year 2023 purchase price would increase the cost to the applicants to $5,050 per TDR and yield a profit to the county of $505 per TDR. Chapter 33-2 of the local code, Code of Public Local Laws for Calvert County, Maryland, allows the Department of Planning and Zoning to develop regulations and policies implementing the TDR reserve program, and also allows the B OCC to adjust the resale price based on considerations of such factors as the B OCC deems relevant. Planning and zoning is requesting to formalize a policy to support the intent of the program by resetting the sale price of the TDRs from the reserve at the purchase price paid plus an administrative fee of 1%. by resetting the sale price of the TDRs from the reserve at the purchase price paid plus an administrative fee of 1%. There is no fiscal impact to this proposal or policy confirmation. The conclusion or recommendation is that the staff request the Board of County Commissioners review the TDR Reserve resale policy as proposed and direct staff to sell TDRs through the reserve program at the purchase price paid by the B OCC plus 1%. Staff will return at a future date to propose amending Chapter 33 of the Code of Public Local Laws to reflect this policy. Thank you.
So I'd just like to clarify in simple terms. When we created the reserve program, it was not the intent to make or lose money on TDRs. It was merely to enable the county to purchase TDRs and then to resale them at the same price that we purchased them at. So that's what we're looking to do, is set a policy for that intent.
So how'd you get from 45-45 to 50-50?
So last year, in fiscal year 2022, the Board of County Commissioners set the price for the par price and the TDR reserve price when the county purchased TDRs at $4,500. For the next fiscal year in 2023, that price went up to $5,000.
So that's those prices plus the 1% administrative fee.
So in the... In its inaugural year, the TDR Reserve purchased TDRs at the $4,500 price. I track those TDRs. So when a... As it says, it's a first-come, first-served basis. When we get an application, this is the first year that we've sold TDRs back out, that we've actually had applications to sell back out. We did not have any of those last year. So I assign the TDRs that are then purchased back out of the reserve. So those first TDRs that we have available, there were 32 of them. So the first 15 of those, they were bought by the Board of County Commissioners for $4,500. So when they go back out, those exact TDRs to be sold back out, we just add the 1% administrative fee. The problem occurred when, this year, the applicants... It's a timing issue. So if TDRs are enough, TDRs aren't sold back out that are also purchased in a given year, you're going to be in this situation. Does that make sense?
No.
So it's initially when Jen and on the advice of everyone else in the department who had worked on the reserve program was, set the price that they were purchased for. Since that time, the TDR reserve price changed. And based on how the resolution got written, when it went through the county attorney's office, they questioned why we weren't charging $5,000 a TDR. And we said, because it was never the intent to make money, we want to sell them for what we purchased them for. So it's the difference between when the TDR price was set.
I understand that part. I understand that you buy them and this fiscal year at this price, the price changes, you buy them at a different price next year. What I'm struggling with is why, all of a sudden, why you don't track those TDRs based on their purchase price? And why, just because we changed the price, that means the price for all of them changes? That's what I'm struggling with.
It was the way the code got written.
So the code is written that they sell at the current price, not at what they were purchased at?
At the fair market value, is what it says.
So now you need to go back and write that to reflect that you sell them for what they were purchased for plus 1%?
That's correct.
Not based on fair market?
Yes.
Okay.
But we can put a policy in place in the meantime.
So we're just going to clean these up and then rewrite Chapter 33?
Exactly. Exactly.
Got you.
And I don't want to get on a side note, but since you said tracking TDRs, how's par working out?
We just completed our par for this fiscal year. And last year, 196 and 1/2 TDRs were sold for $982,500. 10 transactions were completed.
And it's all under par?
Did you say a half?
From the small lot TDRs, yes. That's where we get it.
Yes, I know. Yes, yes.
And from a state.
Did you do that? How you sell a half a TDR? So...
I've had to learn that myself.
How's the fund?
We're doing well, yes.
Good.
And we're working on getting you a total of how many TDRs are available currently. So we'll have that report to you shortly.
And we are working on next year. Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, you're right. I was going to say we'll include it.
We've already started working on next year. I don't have figures today. But we have started working on the process for next year.
To set the par price for the coming year.
People been receptive to...
I am hoping that we will be, we'll have even more response this year than last year. I was pleased. It was the first year I had ever done it. And we... The number of TDRs that we retired last year was higher the previous year, so I was excited. And I was also hap... pleased that we almost made a million dollars in sales. That would have been nice to have made the million-dollar mark, but we came close.
Well, the preservation part?
Very important.
Yeah, you can't put a price tag on that.
No.
Sure. So since we're talking about par and you said you're working on next year's program, an issue arose last year about an individual who tried to sell his TDRs through the par program, but because he wasn't described as an original owner, couldn't. Could you talk about that?
Yes, so the person who... When the applications come into the office, then the staff goes through and preliminarily looks at all of the applications and looks at the eligibility of the applications and then forwards them to the Agricultural Preservation Advisory Board, who then votes on making offers to... Votes to accept them so that the staff can go forward and make the offers to the program. The rules and regulations, as they are currently... Par was set up to encourage landowners to sell and retire their TDRs. And part of that was by landowners who make the very... The first sale of TDRs from their preserve... From the properties in the program, lock that property into preservation. So there is an incentive... That par is an incentive for those folks who have never sold TDRs from their property to do so and then lock the properties into preservation. That is part of why, my understanding, that the par prioritizes landowners in the sale. So in order to sell to par, you have to be a landowner or an original landowner of the APD in order to sell to the purchase and retirement program.
What happens when the original landowner dies and it gets passed on to the next generation?
What happens when the landowner dies and it gets passed on to the next generation depends on what has happened with their estate. If those TDRs are... Become part of their estate, then there are ways... There is a title search that goes to the county attorney's office, and there are ways to establish ownership of the TDRs. But that person then is no longer an original owner of the APD. And so in that case, the TDR Reserve is an excellent opportunity for them to sell their TDRs to the county.
But the family still retains the TDRs.
But not the original person.
Because they're passed away.
That person died.
Yeah, so they passed away. So if they had, say, two kids and there was 10 TDRs and the will dictated that they split it down the middle, each should get five.
Each should get five, yes.
But they can't sell them in the par, right?
But if they don't own...
Because the original owner died.
If they don't own the property within the APD, if the property was sold or they're not...
Yeah, but I'm saying they do. Say they were both given 50-50. And there was 10 TDRs and each person got five, they should have the ability to sell the five each to par.
As currently written, the rules and regulations don't allow that. However, we will be bringing the rules and regulations to you in the next month or so. The Agricultural Preservation Advisory Board just discussed the changes last night and approved to move forward, so they will be coming to you next.
Is that on the list?
We can bring it up for discussion then.
If not, my 20% would like to see it on the list.
Yeah, absolutely. Because when I...
That's silly.
When I heard that last year, that's the craziest thing I've heard in my life.
I mean, I mean, yeah, because that has value. So that's saying something in your estate has value and now you leave that to your children and they lost it. I mean, let's say it's $100,000 value, that's $100,000 out of their estate.
Well, let's be clear. It's not specifically a loss. They can sell. There are other options for them to sell. They can sell to the TDR Reserve or to a private... They could have a private transaction. But can they not sell to the par? This is true. Yes, you are correct.
But it is a loss, because if I want to sell it to keep it preserved, I don't want to see the further development. And that's how I wish to see my family's legacy go. They usually took that option off the table.
That is one of the options of the TDR bank. We can also retire the TDRs that the county purchases. We don't have to sell them.
So, well, yeah, but that goes back to three rule of the day and everything else like that. So that option on the table for that family to say, hey, I never want to see development come from this property. That's why par was put there. So that, in my... Just my 20%, that should be an option for that family, no matter how far down it goes.
Now, to be clear, regardless of how the TDRs are sold, whether it's sold to the county or whether it's sold privately, once a TDR is sold from the property, it locks the property into preservation.
We understand that part.
I'm not advocating your advice, your recommendation either way. I'm just trying to make it clear that it's the conveyance or the sale of the TDRs that locks the property in. Not necessarily whether it's sold to a specific program or sold privately.
That's not the debate.
Okay, very good.
The debate is just because the owner dies and transfers, that locks somebody out of par. Yes. When the goal is to get people into par.
Okay, I'm just making sure that we're all clear and on the same page.
You're never going to clear the TDR bank. That's not going to happen. There's not enough property to clear the TDR bank. So par, just my piece, par is the solution to work on these TDRs. And the more that we get into that, the more preservation we're going to see and to work on that problem.
So while we're talking about APDs, is that going to be up and back up? I've had several citizens question me about that.
This is a step. We have been working on the rules and regulations over the past several months. And as Mary Beth said, I just presented the red line to the Ag Preservation Board last night who voted to begin the process of moving forward with adopting those changes to the rules and regs. And once those are complete and once that is adopted, then we will be moving forward, looking at opening the program and whatever we need to do to make sure that administratively we're ready to go. And it hasn't been open in quite some time, so making sure we understand all those components. Then we will be... The intent is to move forward with that, from my understanding.
Yes, yes, correct.
So just take your ask. The last time it was open, what was the acreage?
The last time it was open, oh my goodness. That was 10 years ago. It was 12 years ago. 2012 was the date that the mortuary was in place.
They've never had an acreage requirement.
There wasn't one in fact?
So you're asking the minimum acreage to put it in an APD?
I didn't know if it was discussed.
Is there a minimum acreage to put a property in APD?
So if an APD is not contiguous to any other preserved property, the minimum acreage is 50. If a piece of property is contiguous with another preserved property, then it is less than 50. 25.
Now, when you meet with the Ag Board, will family conveyance be a topic?
That has not been brought to my attention.
Okay, so I didn't know, like, with them, as things change and people pass away, you know, if that's become an issue or not, you know, or if they're satisfied, you know? And that was, for me, the creation of that board. These are the folks that have them. So it's, you know, it's how to make that work. So I didn't know if that had become an issue.
I don't think they discussed it, but certainly it's something that we can talk about with them.
You have an estimated timeline? I'm sorry, we've gotten way off subject.
Yeah, sorry, my fault.
No, you... Yes, you've got... But that's fine.
You have an estimated timeline for when those changes might come to us?
Not formally though at this time, but in the fall and as soon as possible.
Okay, fall's not far away.
No, it's not. We'll be bringing the par first to get that price set and then the rules and regs.
The par needs to open in order... The par is a cyclical process. In order... It takes some time. It takes pretty much a year in order to get the par open, your approval, the purchase price, the APB, the APAB approved, a discussed, and has a recommended purchase price ready to go at its July meeting. But it takes almost all year to get through one cycle, and so we need to get that out as soon as possible.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You have a motion for me, Commissioner?
I do. I move that we direct staff to sell the TDRs through the reserve program at the purchase price paid by the county plus 1%. Also, come back to us with Chapter 33 to reflect this policy.
I have a motion in a second that we direct staff to sell TDRs through the reserve program at the purchase price paid by the county plus 1%. And the other. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
That brings us to a presentation, Department of Economic Development. Director Oberg, morning.
Morning.
Commissioners, Julie Oberg, Director of Economic Development. I'd like to invite Craig Sewell to come up for the presentation as well. Thank you very much for allowing us to be here today.
Hi.
Good morning.
Would you like me to forego reading the memo and go right into the presentation, or would you like me to summarize the memo?
Could you summarize it?
Yeah, just summarize.
Okay, my pleasure. Sure. Anna Rundle County Government purchased the Lothian Grain Elevator site from Purdue Agribusiness in June. And the Southern Maryland Ag Development Commission has been asked to come up with some additional ways that they can provide value-added agriculture operations at that facility. So they have just applied for a $200,000 rural Maryland council grant that would help to create the blueprints and the... Like a master plan to create a flour mill on-site there. And they also, as part of that, would be using wheat that would be grown here in Southern Maryland for that facility. And then also have a... Launch a premium wheat-growing program with the commodity growers of wheat here in Southern Maryland. So as part of that grant, it's a matching grant for 25%. So they're asking... The Sematic is asking each of the Southern Maryland counties to contribute $10,000 to that. And I encourage you all to consider that request, and then I will hand it over to Craig to introduce himself and do the presentation.
Mr. Chairman, good morning, and good morning, Commissioners. My pleasure to be here. We should probably be here more often to let you know what Sematic is doing with agriculture in Southern Maryland. We're off the heels of a event last night. The Bi-Local Event this year was held in St. Mary's County, and we welcomed 1,100 people to Settler Post Farm last night to celebrate local foods. So if my eyes look a little droopy, that's the reason for that. I am not a PowerPoint reader. However, I am going to just briefly go through some of these slides and then if you... And because it's way too small for you to read. I will briefly go through them, and then it's for your information if you'd like to look at them a little later. The grant that we have applied for, actually, it is officially in as of two weeks ago, is a Rural Entrepreneurship Agricultural Cooperative Development Grant, RIMPIS Grant. What the cooperative part of it is that it needs the cooperation of at least two government entities to be able to do this project. Sematic being a quasi-government agency is one. The second one is Anna Rundle. However, this is a regional project, and we're reaching out to you to discuss the regionality of this project, the importance of it, and your support if you so desired. So Page 1 is simply the conditions for the grant, the RIMPIS grant. And as Julie's described, there are two parts to the request, to the grant that we're making, of one of which is for planning and design for a commercial, yet artisanal-type flour mill to be able to create all-purpose flowers and specialty-type niche products not only to Southern Maryland, but regionally and throughout. I will highlight that last year, the state legislature did pass a law, a guideline, actually, for Maryland State institutions to spend 20% of their food dollars on locally-produced foods. At this point, because of the lack of aggregation statewide with small, family farmers, none of which... None of... Not one of which can meet demands of, say, a school system, University of Maryland, prisons, those sort of things. Through aggregation, we should be able to expand the markets and increase sales to... From Southern Maryland farms to actually sell to Maryland State institutions. So Part 1 is for planning and design for such a mill. I attended a international... Uh, I attended a International Flower Millers Association, uh, about two months ago. Uh, there are three major companies in this country that, that build flour mills. Uh, one of which, uh, and who knew, is in Glen Burnie. Uh, so I spent a couple of days with, uh, uh, the folks in Glen Burnie and came up with a plan to be able to, uh, put together a mill that is going to do a couple of things. One of which will be to produce all-purpose flour. Uh, I would like to see, uh, any trip throughout Southern Maryland, passing any restaurant, any school, to be using Southern Maryland-raised and produced flour, uh, to feed our people. Uh, we produce the wheat. We don't necessarily produce the right type of wheat at the present time. Uh, and that is for part two of the request, to work with, uh, for Smatic, to work with, um, University of Maryland Extension and with the Farm Bureau, to be able to incentivize the growth of, um, the type of wheat that is most conducive to make bread and, uh, which is, uh, a hard wheat, most of the wheat that's grown now. Uh, and I will defer any and all questions to the chairman, uh, for these. But to produce now and sold through the Lothian elevator, uh, primarily goes to the eastern shore and, uh, to feed poultry. So at any rate, uh, the, uh, there have been studies done, uh, to prove the efficacy of growing this particular cultivar in Southern Maryland. What we want to do is make it a win for everybody. So if you grow this type of wheat, we're going to make sure that you get a premium amount for the wheat, uh, and that it's going to be used to feed the people of Southern Maryland. So the value proposition is actually, um, not complicated. Uh, what we want to do is support the sustainability of local family farms. Uh, happen to be of the opinion that, uh, the interjection of, of, of government, of local government getting involved in infrastructure to support the agricultural community is imperative at the present time. Uh, the trends in modern agriculture is towards, not to the local family farm, although that's what you may see on the TV commercials, it's actually towards robotics, and it's actually towards, uh, the antithesis of being able to do that. Uh, so this is one way that we'd be able to support the family farm. Uh, one of the reasons also is the, uh, maintenance of the facility in Lothian. Uh, it has some age on it. It is used by, it, it, it holds approximately 17% of the grain that is grown in Southern Maryland. Uh, it is a lifeline to a number of small wheat farmers, uh, who actually were, uh, were more than a little concerned about the closing and the sale. Uh, and, uh, and I must say that I think it's rather admirable of Anarundel County to actually step to the plate and purchase this. They're taking a chance. Uh, so what we're trying to do, that's a 15-acre property of which six acres is taken up by the grain elevator itself, which leaves us, uh, some land to be able to do some things. So, uh, we're looking at the county executive and Anarundel County is very fond of putting a commercial composting facility on the site. We are recommending this flour mill to be there as well. I've already briefly described the business plan. There was a point where there were mills all over this area, uh, and now there are none. Uh, and so what we aim to do, however, is to be able to produce not only the all-purpose flour that we talked about, which has great commercial, um, capabilities, but also to be able to do the stone-ground flowers as well, uh, to be able to meet the health requirements of a certain amount of the population. We will also be able to do barley flowers, rye flowers, cornmeal, those sort of things. So it'll be a multifunctional place. So what we're asking, what the money would be spent for would be a detailed shovel-ready flour mill to be able, so once, uh, the, once the, uh, elevator has transitioned and that's operating, that we would be able to walk into there with the plants already intact, have the, um, site design work done, and then go directly to build. Uh, I will add parenthetically, because I'm also in charge of the Regional Agricultural Center, the Meat Processing Center, and, uh, as planned in St. Mary's County. That has taken way too long. One of the issues with that is that once the relationships were made and monies were exchanged and whatnot, it was turned over to, uh, Department of Public Works, who'd never built a butcher shop before. So there was a huge learning curve that's taken place over the last couple of years. Uh, I would like not to repeat that. So using this money to be able to hire consultants, the Glen Burnie people, for instance, to be able to design it so when the ground is ready, that this would be able to be done. It could also be done in any other place in the state. To let you know where Calver County stands, um, according to the 2017 agricultural cen- census, approximately 1,800 acres of wheat were under production in Calver County, 130,000 bushels. 12% of the Southern Maryland total of wheat is grown in Calver County. The goal is to every kitchen in Calver County use Southern Maryland-produced wheat. And that's my contact information. So we would ask for your support.
Sir, let me ask you, um, there'd be no limitations placed on the farmer, correct? Because I seen, I forget on the slide before, we were, what percent, uh?
12%.
12%. So if we were able to produce more?
Absolutely.
Would this facility be able to handle that and encourage that?
I'm almost going to, I'm almost, uh, conveniently took a phone call.
Sorry.
Smatic will not be involved in the operations of the grain elevator per se. That is going to go to someone with experience, farmer experience, so we have. So to answer your question, however, um, to be relational, a relation will need to be set up with the operator of the facility and the type of wheat that we will be, uh, accumulating from local farms to be able to supply it if, for some reason, the relationship doesn't work. Uh, the elevator itself is going to be, um, used for, totally for soybeans. Um, it's possible for us to put up our own individual, uh, smaller container to be able to do the sort of wheat we're looking for.
I would hate for the Calver County farmer to make the investment and to produce all these crops believing that they have a way to take this to market and go, and then all of a sudden the rug's pulled out. You know, so, I mean, I just want to make sure there's no, and, and I don't possess to be a farmer, just how in business goes. If we don't control it, then, you know, and like, and it sounds like Anarundel County holds the keys to this. So I just want to make sure to be a protection for the Calver County farmer. Um, because, you know, that's an investment on their part, you know, that's a major investment. If they say, okay, now it's an opportunity, and stop me if I'm, if I'm going down the wrong road. Um, you know, there's an opportunity here to do a crop that, you know, we'd, like you said, could make a premium price on, and then also there's no market for it.
Well, there, I, I just received an email yesterday from a, uh, mill in Virginia that's seeking the type of wheat that I'm recommending that we start growing here.
Because I'm like you, I would love to every table in Calver County, it came right out of this backyard. I mean, that's, that's the goal, right?
Yeah.
So I just want to make sure that-
And it's also the goal of Anarundel County, too. Um, so this is a hand-in-glove relationship, no doubt.
So do you have enough money now to, for the plan, design, and the build stage of this?
Not to build. No, this would be the planning and design.
For this money's here.
And then we engage in fundraising with our federal partners and state partners to be able to get the facility actually built.
And the timeline for actual completion is what? Best-case scenario?
Best-case scenario?
Best case.
With the knowledge of building something with, uh, with another county in Southern Maryland? Uh, I would say probably three and a half years.
Three and a half years. And how about the other five counties? Who has committed already?
Uh, money or endorsement?
Money.
Money, just Anarundel.
Okay.
What's the projected cost of this facility?
About, so two and a half million.
Between five, that doesn't seem insane.
Pardon me?
Between five counties, that doesn't seem crazy, as long as it can do what the projection is.
That would be our belief as well. It's also designed as a moneymaker, too. This is an entrepreneurial activity. I happen to believe that, uh, my background person, I come from private business. I had my own business for a number of years. I don't believe government should run businesses.
They don't do it well.
They don't do it well. So we find the right people to do it, and what we do is arrange, uh, advantageous lease arrangements for these entrepreneurs to potentially give them a leg up.
Have the farmers expressed a lot of interest in us? I mean, are they-
They have indeed. So there's a lot of fear about losing the elevator to begin with. Uh, with this, with the purchase of the, with the elevator and now hopefully having a, a new operator come in. Uh, that's given a level of security, and then let's move ahead. So we have the security of the storage. Now let's move ahead and really try to make this, uh, advantageous for everyone.
Commissioner?
It was a total of, you said your demand would probably be 500 acres annually?
That would be the initial ask. Uh, 500 acres of the initial ask, the-
So that's a hundred dollars or 100 acres per county in Southern Maryland?
I haven't looked at it in that way. I've looked at it in a totality of 500 acres. But, uh, that would be the, the absolute minimum of beginning to be able to do it. And then we'd need to ramp up from there. I think you need to, you need to prove it to people that it's not only going to be helpful, but it's also going to be financially viable for them to be able to do that. So working with University of Maryland Extension to get our 500 acres going and then grow from there.
Is the $10,000 outlay from each county going to be the only outlay we can, that you can foresee for us? Will you be coming back for more money?
Uh, that is not my plan.
Okay.
So what variety wheat are you talking about?
Well, I think we, we do do hard red, and we also need to do, uh, a soft white, which we have. So an all-purpose flour needs both.
You say we are growing soft white?
There are some, I believe that are soft white.
Because traditionally, it's all soft red.
Okay.
And I don't know that we've ever grown any hard wheat. You know reason for that?
I've had this discussion with Ben Veale, with, uh, University of Maryland. And there are, it has been used successfully in Virginia. So there is, there are studies and there's proof in the pudding that it is a, a, a crop that is capable of being grown here. Uh, I think that it's just, there hasn't been the market for purchasing of it. Uh, there's only one little guy that I know of down south, uh, Charles County, that's doing a lot of, like, artisanal-type wheats.
A lot of? What's a lot of?
I'm sorry, that-
You said a lot of. I said, how much is a lot of?
Oh, oh, for him?
Yeah.
No, no, he's just got a couple acres.
Yeah, that's not a lot.
I, I misspoke.
And we've had mills in Maryland that have all gone out of business.
I agree.
For a reason.
You've had, uh, lots of small, uh, processors have gone out of business, and there are reasons for that.
What are they?
Um, inefficiencies for one. I think the marketplace is for, traditionally for, for consolidation. And it's also, uh, uh, where am I going to sell my product? Where we are selling, uh, if you noticed in my presentation, I didn't necessarily tell you that we were going to be able to sell this in every Safeway store or every giant food co-op because those are, uh, uh, there are huge barriers to entry.
Yeah, corporations, yeah. I see it in my industry all the time. Yeah, yeah, it's enormous. Yeah.
It's enormous, and the grocery industry is, it's, it's, uh-
It's a machine.
It's growing even worse.
Yeah, it's a machine. It's, it's, I mean, when you start seeing gas pumps in there and then dry cleaning and everything and every, anything, and, um, and doesn't necessarily mean the quality went up either. You can't even find a person that works to register anymore.
Well, you can't find a butcher anymore either.
Yeah, yeah, it comes pre-cut. So, yeah, so that's why I asked my, my question is, would this be a vehicle, a vehicle for that local farmer to say, you know what, I've got a generational business now because I actually have a place that can get my goods to market and a place to go. That's, I don't expect, I don't, you know, pretend to know anything about farming, but I do know in business, once he makes that initial investment, it takes years sometimes for it to come back.
I think, I, you just offered sage advice, I think. Uh, in a gap and out. I had a restaurant for 20 years, but I was an economist in school, and I also went to Harvard. So you can take that for whatever you wish. But, um, the first thing I did when I went with Smatic five years ago is I did a gap analysis of, of the supply chain, food supply chain in Southern Maryland. We have a lot of farms doing really good work. We have a lot of consumers that want to buy that product. We just don't do a very good job of connecting those farms with those consumers. And a lot of that has to do with the lack of processing capabilities. Uh, so being able to bring meat processing, for instance, or grain processing here and be able to aggregate and distribute that, get it to the folks that want to purchase it. Uh, 13% of the population of Southern Maryland shops at farmers' markets. Now, on the one hand, that's great. That's 13% of people are coming, buy my stuff at a farmer's market. The way I look at it is I'm leaving 80%, 87% of my potential customers on the table.
Yeah, but they're going to a grocery store. They're not coming to a farmer's market. They're going to grocery stores.
They are absolutely going to the grocery store.
It's a niche market. And for most cases, you're not going to draw them away from the grocery store.
No, no, we just need to, people shop by convenience, and we're going to need to make it more convenient for them to be able to do this. So the business plan here is not to sell this in Safeway. The business plan for this, for the commercial part, is to be able to sell it institutionally and to restaurants and to caterers and to-
That's quite another animal right there, because once you get into that, now you got a, somebody on the street trying to sell those goods at an innocent inflated cost.
So what's the price point for institutional flour?
Right, that's, that's the problem, right.
I ran my own restaurant for 20 years. I was the lowest of low-hanging fruits. Anybody could have come to my back door and sold me anything, and I would have found out a way to be able to do that. I will add this. This was in Annapolis, and I never had a farmer from Southern Maryland come to my back door.
And I understand, but going, going back to your one point, if, if you're, you're going to rely on sales, basically going door-to-door to mom and pops, problem is they're going to pay a price for a product that's going to make it harder for themselves. So when that person's going, you know, I got a Safeway and I get this loaf of bread for two bucks. And now, and I know this one I get at this mom and pop shop is a lot better, but it's $4.
Correct.
That, you, you've already lost. You, you're, you're not going to compete like that. Um-
I'm not going to be able to compete on price.
You're not. And, and unfortunately, as we watch the dollar shrink more and more and more, you know, I watch price every single day. I'm selling products today cheaper than I did 14 years ago coming from my distributors because they're backed up with it and they've got to get rid of it. But they have that power to lose money like that. That farmer makes that investment, they, they can't go backwards. They're, they're making that investment based on a price, and if that price backs down, they're, they're instantly out of business. They don't have a buffer like that. So I fully encourage anything that would help these local farmers. But my fear is, I want to make sure that, that if they, if they make the commitment to do this, what's their, what's their assurances that they, that they have a market five years, 10 years? Because they're, they can't grow enough in one, yeah, yeah. They can't grow enough in one year to pay it back.
Because you're asking them to grow a product they can't sell anywhere else. So how are you going to guarantee the farmer that you're going to take everything he grows? Because he can't sell it anywhere else. So if you don't buy it, what's he going to do with it? Because there's no market for hard wheat or soft white in this region. So if you tell farmers, you go to some farmers, say, hey, we need 100 acres of wheat. And let's say this year they have really good weather and they have a bumper crop and yields are up 20%. They've got 20% more than you thought you were going to get. We're going, who's going to take it? What are you going to do with it? I guess that's, and- I guess that's, and Commissioner Hart raised that point early on about, you know, you're asking them to go out on a limb and grow something that's special. So you've got to guarantee them who you're going to take it.
This is an entrepreneurial activity.
I understand that.
Is that, is that not a good word?
No, no, because, because they have a product that spoils. See, if I produce a product that has a very long shelf life, then I can roll the dice a little bit because, because yes, I didn't get my money right then, but I still have something. That stuff dies on the vine, and when it dies and has to be discarded, it's a complete loss. And to ask somebody who's flying without a net as it is, everybody knows right now the farming community has seen better days than what it's seeing today. The price of fuel, everything else like that, cost of goods are up, and the competition for that dollar, that retail dollar, you see the Walmarts of the world. I mean, Amazon sending stuff to the house. I mean, everybody's competing for that same dollar. To ask that person that level of risk, they're risking their home, you know? Bud Light, you see it right now. Bud Light's fallen on some hard times. But you think MBEV is missing a, missing a mortgage payment? MBEV ain't even feeling this a lick, okay? So, but when you're asking that individual to roll that dice like that, there has got to be guarantees in place. That entrepreneurial word means like the stock market, you're taking a risk. And there are educated risks.
That's, that's not what I'm trying to emphasize when I use that word.
Maybe I'm taking it wrong. When you say entrepreneurial, well, that's what I hear when you say, eh, that's the entrepreneurial thing.
I'm using that word only, only in that there's a certain energy and there's a certain timeliness.
But what's the risk to the farmer?
There is... I think the way, let me back up just a half a step. I think it's incumbent upon us to do everything we can to make sure that the small family farmer in Southern Maryland continues to exist. I think there's a number of ways to be able to approach that. And one of the ways is to be able to expand markets for them and, and introduce, be able to have them compete in different markets. They are frozen out of so many markets today that they are limited pretty much to farmers' markets and farm stands. What we are trying to do, and what this project is trying to do, is to try to bring additional markets and additional opportunities and additional, um, cultivars to be able to bring those sort of things to market to make Southern Maryland farmers truly be able to compete in a global marketplace.
And I appreciate that, but if, and stop me if I'm wrong, but if they're not going to chains or corporations, we're seeing small businesses shrink, especially after, after COVID. You've seen a lot of restaurants that never came back. So if the only opportunity they have is a restaurant or a mom and pop, they're investing in something that's shrinking. They're not investing in something that, that, that's, that's, that's increasing. I mean, we have not seen restaurants come back to the level that they were pre-COVID. So I'm a little confused. What is their market then? If, I, I'm with you. I would like to see them expand the market, but what, what is this market we're expanding to?
Yeah, the business plan for the commercial business, because this isn't going to make sense unless everybody makes money. Okay?
Well, I'm with you there, but I just like to know who the customer is.
The biggest, the biggest opportunity for us to make money is to make a high-quality, all-purpose flour and to be able to take advantage of the Maryland set of sites for guidelines for Maryland institutions to be able to start purchasing these sort of things. They are eager to be able to do that. I could sell this today to Calver, to Charles County Public Schools.
Well, yeah, you can't, you can't compete. Governments do own price. I worked for a company that they used to bid on, actually on Charles County schools and everything else like this. And you know how we won that bid? We won same-day bread, okay? I was, worked for a bread guy for a long time, same-day bread, and it was all price-driven. It was the race to the bottom is what we used to call it. We used to take and lower that price down as much as humanly possible. So, and I even did Calver County Schools for a while. So if they were doing hamburgers that day, they got hamburgers. I brought that morning and they got it on the very lowest price. It was, I worked for Schmidt, and it was between us and Wonder Bread all the time. And whoever had the lowest price won. Wasn't nothing to do about quality. Quality was never part of the equation.
I think that program has quotas, doesn't it? So that the institutions will have to purchase so much local product?
20%, right, you said.
Yeah, and this would be, this would be...
I mean, I'm all for it. I want a vehicle to work.
This would be absolutely the easiest way for them to make those guidelines, the easiest way to do it. Much easier than buying 20,000 pounds of apples and then having to find places for, to store those. To be able to buy 25-pound bags of all-purpose flour produced from Maryland, meets their bogies at an affordable price to be able to do that. That's the bedrock business principle behind this.
So can you get any, have you had any discussions with them about?
Them being?
The institutions to see if they are willing, and how much, how much are they willing to buy?
Maryland Health Services for one.
How much are they willing to buy?
This project is moving a lot. I have not, I don't know exactly how much. They buy a lot. They would probably buy more than we would be able to produce. I will say this, as you well know, this project has moved along rather quickly, especially for government. I feel comfortable in that because it's moving at the pace of business and not at the pace of government. So I'm feeling comfortable about the direction it's going, the feedback that we've been getting from all of this, and, and the potential to be able to make it a, a win for pharmacy. Clearly, the wheat farmers in Southern Maryland could get along fine raising product to be able to, to feed the poultry on the eastern shore. Purdue said enough. I don't want to do that anymore. It's not me. So now we, we have, we have a situation here where we're trying to find markets for this because the traditional markets are going someplace else. Does that make sense?
So when is new management planning on opening the mill?
Opening the elevator?
Yes.
I think that they're still in negotiations with an operator right now. Supposedly, um, it was supposed to be August 1. It's supposed to be today. But I don't believe that's happened quite yet.
And Anna Rundle's taking a chance by actually the purchase of this?
Yes.
Well, they got reimbursed by the state.
Okay, but what I'm saying, do, do we think that we need to make sure that they're going to succeed before we move forward with other plans such as what you're proposing?
Well, I think that that would be one reasonable way to look at it, no doubt. I'm moving ahead on this with, um, the fact that if Anna Rundle's Plan A doesn't work, then we're going to have to search for a Plan B because we've got to keep that place open. The other thing is, is that the design of this mill, I, I happen to believe, and I'm hopefully done some sort of convincing as well here today, that these sort of projects are necessary for the future of agriculture. So that even some weird thing that went south or went sideways in Anna Rundle County, we would still have plans and designs to build a facility that could be plopped down the street.
So what is the, the mill you're thinking about? What's the capacity?
It's going to be way beyond what, what I forecast that we're going to need right now because these folks talk in hundreds of thousands of pounds a week, which is going to be, so we will be overbuilt. No doubt. We will be overbuilt, at least initially. So I, I don't have any concerns about our capacity because we're going to be built with way more capacity than what we need. That's just the way mills are built these days.
Questions?
I mean, I have a lot more questions than I think we could get answers for at this stage of the game. I mean, I think you're looking for $10,000 is what you're looking for, right?
Well, there's matching funds for this particular, for this particular grant. It's a, I'm asking $200,000.
With a lot of questions.
Well, $200,000 for the grant. There's a 25% match.
It's $50,000.
So $50,000 match. So trying to make this a regional project and make it to the, to rural Maryland to make it look as if we have the full support of...
Have you talked to all the others?
Pardon me?
Have you talked to the others?
Yes, I, in fact, I'm talking with St. Mary's this afternoon.
And Charles?
Charles is, 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 is an interesting, uh, group, and, uh, right now they're not receptive.
And Prince George's?
Prince George's did write us a letter, and we're following up with them financially.
Maybe we'll, um, we'll have to think on it.
No worries. Actually, my pleasure, and I think we should probably do this more often.
We should.
So just drop by and let you know what we're, we're trying to do for the farmers down there.
Love, love the concept. It's just a lot of questions right now that...
No worries. I'll be, I'm available.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I believe that brings us to public comment. Mr. County Attorney?
Thank you, sir. The board adopted a resolution in 1989 intending to maintain the order and decorum of the governmental process. Copy is found here to my right. The Ethics Commission has asked that we remind speakers of public comment that lobbyists include those who seek to influence public policy, and lobbyists must register in advance. By Resolution 51-20, any individual or the appointed spokesperson for a group is welcome to address the Board of County Commissioners on any matter germane to the business of county government. Persons addressing the board shall not be permitted to make statements or remarks that concern only the private activities, lifestyles, or beliefs of others unrelated to the business of the Board of County Commissioners or the professional duties and performance of its employees or the employees of its elected officials. Persons addressing the board shall refrain from statements, remarks, or conduct that is uncivil, rude, vulgar, profane, or otherwise disruptive to the conduct of the board's business. The floor has been opened for public comment, first from those in the meeting room who may begin making their way to the microphone, then to those joining virtually. All speakers are asked to identify themselves, and whether you are speaking as an individual or you will be allocated two minutes, or as the appointed spokesperson for a group, you will be allocated five minutes. For those attending virtually, if you wish to speak, please raise your hand, use the raise your hand function. Virtual speakers will be identified by their screen name and unmuted one at a time. Anybody in the room?
I'm representing the group that's trying to do the text amendment for the increased density. I'm John Simpson. I've operated that hotel for 35 years, and I don't believe there's any restriction on renting hotel rooms for a weekly or a monthly basis. That's nine-plus acres. You've got 326 rooms. That's a density of just under 40 units per acre. Okay, so if this is not going to fly, there's a good possibility someone could come in there, reopen that hotel as a low-budget hotel, and you'd still have apartments. So I would suggest that you consider making the changes, and you could beef up to 55-plus to make it more sustainable. And you could make this text amendment subject to existing buildings because that building is there. And that's a port and place concrete building. It's got a useful life of well over 100 years. So you've got a chance for a really nice development in Solomons that addresses a lot of needs, a hotel room, conference center, senior living, memory care, and, and a huge increase in the tax base or potentially a blighted building. So please consider that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions, Ryan?
Anyone else in the room? Uh, Mr. Cormier has joined us virtually.
Good morning, commissioners. My name's Joseph Cormier, and I wanted to thank you for setting up that joint meeting last night with the Board of Education. For future meetings, I would like to suggest maybe setting the tables in more of a V formation so you could look each other in the eye instead of craning your necks. Additionally, having the document on the screen so we could follow along. As you said, strike three, strike seven, combine four, five, six. I didn't know if you were getting ready to hike a football or make a decision. It'd be very helpful for the public to have access to the information as you're going through it. And it's unfortunate that that slide wasn't included in the PowerPoint that went out. It, it hampered my ability as a member of the public to prepare informed comments, and it seemed like the board members didn't have access to that before the meeting either. So there was a lot of catching up to do during that meeting that could have been better used time. If the BOE had known, they could have brought their HR team or their procurement supervisors. So, you know, I, I hope in the future that there's more information change back and forth. When we do our PDs of the school system, we use chart paper on the wall or dry erase board. So as you guys were going through, you could have, you know, kept track of that for everyone to, to follow along with, and you could have done that with a document camera or just putting that, you know, slide up on the, the screen and the stream for being able to follow along at home. But thank you for setting that up, and thank you for all the staff that worked to put that meeting together. I know 10 people in one room is not an easy task.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is the last speaker, Mr. President.
Thank you. That brings us to Commissioner Reports. Commissioner Cox?
Thank you, Mr. President. Like public comment just said, we did have a public hearing last night, and we started the conversation on the performance audit with the school board, so just let everybody know about that. Tonight's going to be a beautiful weather night for National Night Out. So please, if you get a chance to go out and check out some neighborhoods. Also, I hear there is a pickleball tournament at St. Anthony's Church in the parking lot this evening.
There you go.
So you might want to check that out.
Mark, will you be attending?
Playing.
Mr. Willis, are you?
Playing.
Oh, he's playing.
Oh, okay.
Commissioner Hans is my partner.
Oh, well, I have no doubt you will bring home the gold.
Looking forward to it.
And also, please keep in your prayers, the Horseman family, the loved one passed away this week, and that's all I have.
Thank you.
Commissioner Ireland?
Uh, attended the Lee Bryce concert on the 27th. Got there a little bit late and left a little bit early, but it was very well attended. I, I had something I had to take care of at home last minute. National Night Out tonight. Like I said, it's, I've seen it go up and down. There seems to be a lot of enthusiasm this year about it, a lot of competitiveness. I'm going to attend several myself, and it'll be interesting to see, uh, when we compare notes, who we think came out number one. We might have to have some kind of...
The future on Russell, my money's on him.
A special, uh... Recognition for those people. But no, I'm looking forward to, uh, to visiting a few communities tonight myself.
Thank you. Commissioner Grass, though?
I as well attended the BOE, BOCC meeting, or actually public hearing last night. I'll be attending National Night Out in Chesapeake Beach, and now that I know about the pickleball tournament, I will be running by there and see what's going on, if you all aren't kidding me. Are you kidding me? Is it really happening? It's happening? Are you going to be there, Commissioner?
No, I am headed to Calvert Town and Oakland Hall to see.
Okay, okay. Want to let you all know this coming Saturday at Jefferson Patterson Park, they're going to have a Neon Knights 5K. Starts at 5 o'clock. The race begins at 7:00. There's going to be music, food trucks, and fun activities for the whole family. So I encourage you to attend that as well, and that's it.
Thank you. Commissioner Hart?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. Like I say, we were all at the meeting last night, and I went to a meet and greet with the CEO of the hospital again. He came down to meet some folks down at the Osprey, so there was a few folks down there. And he's a very energetic, knowledgeable person. We're very fortunate that he has moved his family from Kentucky to here. And so I think the future is very, very bright for our hospital here.
Thank you. So just want to remind everybody, the Prince Regent Fireman's Carnival starts tonight at the Calver County Fairgrounds. It runs until Saturday night, so you can do National Night Out and go to the carnival another night. And National Night Out, it's, I think it's 13 different communities. You don't have, some, some of these are in specific communities. You don't have to live in that community to participate. You can come if you live nearby. But if you have never been to one, it's, and the weather's going to be great this evening. You should come out. There's a lot of activities, food, so it's a great community event. And also, today earlier, we gave a proclamation out for National Black Business Month. Want to ask you to support our local black businesses. They're an important part of our community. And also, we recognize National Farmers Market Week, which is next week. Of course, we always want you to support our farmers' market, and today is the farmers' market at the hospital, Calvert Health. Starts at 2:30, I believe, runs until about 9:00. And today is the farmers market at the hospital, Calvert Health, starts at 2:30, I believe, and runs until about 6:00. It's an excellent market, so you can stop in there. And I hope to see some of you out tonight at Brooms Island and Oakland Hall and maybe Long Beach. You know, when you're campaigning, you try to hit as many of the events on National Night Out as you can. And it's a struggle to get more than four. Because they are from one end of the county to the other and you stop and there's a lot of people there and you talk and get engaged. And so three is probably too much. I'm not going to make three tonight, but I can be optimistic. But weather's going to be great. Get out.
Some of those events start at 4:30 and others don't start until 6:00.
Yeah, if you look at our, it should be on our website, places and times. Go at 5:00 or 6:00, you're pretty safe. So, yeah, that's all I have. Commissioner Hart?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. I move to recess to executive session pursuant to general provisions, Article Section 3-305B, 3, to consider the acquisition of real property for a public purpose and manage directly related to the acquisitions.
Second. I have motion on second that we go into executive session. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Everyone have a great day.
Thank you.